Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 2015 Spring Forum of the Town Council. I'd ask everybody to please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Leteri.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move on to the formalities, I'd like to congratulate and recognize our national championship ladies for the cheerleaders. They arrived home today with not an easy trip, but thanks to Superintendent Masiro, Sean Driscoll, and Vinnie Crossman, who pulled a lot of strings. They got home safely and pulled up in front of the high school at about 8:50 this morning, all with big smiles on their faces and exhaustion in their eyes. But it's a beautiful tribute and it's a "That's Winthrop," that's Winthrop, girls. Just as a brief introduction, according to the Winthrop Town Charter, the purpose of this annual Spring Forum is to provide an opportunity for the public to bring their concerns, comments, and questions regarding budgeting and other spending matters to the attention of the elected and appointed officials of the community. We've changed the format a bit this year to be similar to what we did last year. We're going to shift the level, shift the input in the forum to come more directly from the citizens, encouraging you to bring forward your visions for the future of our community. We encourage you to offer suggested budget strategies to attain your visions and to improve the lifestyle that the majority of our citizens envision. The purpose of this forum is to determine, and have Mr. McKenna explain, the budgeting process. We all know that budgeting is difficult. Well, actually, budgeting is simple. It's not easy, but it's simple. Town budget has many similarities to a home budget. Simply stated, both budgets have incomes and expenses. Expenses and income do not balance; priorities need to be established. This process involves countless hours of deliberation for municipal budget. To achieve a balanced budget, either expenses need to be adjusted, or revenue needs to be increased, or a combination of both. We, our elected officials, as we prepare the fiscal '16 budget, are asking you to express your goals and priorities and offer budgeting suggestions, solutions, and how to best achieve the goals for the visions of our community. Let us know your thoughts on these adjustments and in spending, and producing other sources of revenue if necessary. Our format is that Mr. McKenna is going to give a presentation, followed by introduction of Mr. Winn, who is our chairman of Finance Commission, and he's going to give a little explanation of what his group does. And then, when they're finished, probably around 7:30, we'll open it up to questions. The council will come back up here. And the questions will be directed either to the council, to Mr. McKenna, or to the individual department heads who are in the audience as well. So, again, we're going to move on with that presentation, and questions will be after everything is completed. Mr. McKenna, it's your show.
Thank you. We're going to do something a little bit different this evening. I could ask my public safety team and the superintendent to come up for a second, for a few minutes. What we're going to do, since this year was extraordinary, an extraordinary winter, to say the least, and it still doesn't quite feel, even though this is called Spring Forum, I'm still feeling a little chilly in this room, so it hasn't quite, you know, convinced me that we're actually in spring. But let's take a quick, you know, eight to 10-minute look backward on what we just went through. Because what we just went through was a historic snow season. All collapsed into about five weeks of incredible snowfall, record-breaking, in fact. And what I did in preparing for the Spring Forum was to think about, you know, take a minute to reflect on that, and what I did was I printed out my texts exchanged between myself and these folks in the way we handled some of the situations we were faced with as this snow came upon us and how we dealt with it. And I thought it'd be fun for us to take a little step outside of the usual customs of this forum and just read to you our text exchange while we see some of the scenes of what we confronted. What do you say, a little entertainment? All right, here we go. All right, Chief, you're up, go.
Looks like we're in for our first big one. Steve, are we ready for this?
Yep, all set.
I'm here if you need me, please keep me in the loop.
Will do.
I assume you'll be using the Cummings School during the storm as an emergency center? If so, I want to make sure I touch base with my custodian. Rich, Steve, Paul, O'Donnell have radios. Do we need any more? I have a spare. I assume we will be meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thanks.
Cummings is our primary shelter. Speaking with the boss last night, he planned on a storm meeting. See you in the a.m. and thanks for thinking of me.
Channel 5 just called. They may want to interview Steve or Paul Flanagan to get a live shot for Storm Story for tonight's news.
Better one of them than me.
Me too.
Paul's a movie star, I'll give him the photo op. See you all in the morning.
I'm already in bed getting my beauty rest, I'll be ready.
Folks, I'll be calling off school tomorrow and Wednesday. My notice will be going out at noon.
Thank you. Good job on Code Red, Chief, thanks. Good luck overnight.
Code Red had four million calls backed up launching. That was the reason for the delay. We launched our call at 8:00 p.m.
Wow, get some sleep.
I am around if you need me.
DeLeo put a call into Massport for some assistance to Winthrop. Waiting for their call now. Steve, what equipment would you prefer?
Two-ten wheelers on the way to Public Works.
Gary Tobin at Massport spoke with DPW. We will be leaving, we will be delivering two dump trucks and two front-end loaders with personnel at DPW facility at 2:00 p.m. today. Able to loan them for six hours or so. This is a text from Todd Smith, I just want to keep you in the loop.
Thanks, I have a convoy of three MWR8 trucks attempting to open up the point.
Thank you.
Whether it's a medical issue, or fire, or police emergency, or any other public safety issue, it couldn't happen without the streets being cleared during major weather events. Hats off and thanks to DPW Director Calla and his crew. So says Russ Sanford and other councilors. Travel ban lifted as of midnight. Do you do your best to get a crew in early, thanks. Note from Jim Leteri. Just got in from a ride around town. Can't say enough for Steve and his crew. Although I know I'll curse tomorrow when the store will be all plowed in again, laugh out loud, I do realize that a tough, the tough job they have. With the amount of snow we received in a relatively short period of time, the streets are remarkably good. I hope Steve and his crew get some well-deserved rest tonight. Steve, Paul, John, Terry just sent out an advisory, please post, thanks, Jim.
Center Shirley Street operations all free, just like you like it. Crest Ave widened with Memer loaders. Memer loaders handling salt pile.
We are all going ahead with a state of emergency declaration. I will be preparing the notice and send along to the community via every media available. Police will be ordering people to stay off the streets while we clear and push back. I will monitor conditions and let you know when the SOE can be lifted. Yes, from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., so we can do major pushback in the beach area. Right now, those areas are critical and access for emergency services are compromised given the amount of snow and lack of adequate access. Steve, Rick, the plow guy I spoke to two days ago, says he's got a ten-wheeler and a loader. Gave him your number.
Thank you.
Town manager providing lunch to DPW at 12:00 noon today for public safety at DPW. Come on by.
Thanks, Jim.
Center half-complete.
Amazing. What do you think about us doing a storm and snow update on WCAT today?
Okay with me. We got the center really good and we spent several hours cleaning up the landing. I was able to hold on to the two-ten wheelers till 12:30 a.m. last night.
Request from Peter Gill. Should we do a Code Red tonight regarding removing all cars from municipal lots tomorrow?
Call going out at 7:30 p.m.
Hi Steve, Craig Mail is asking for some attention to two areas in his precinct. Here's his text, quote, "Took a brief tour. Here are two traffic safety issues that need a little attention, maybe when they get back out. These are not convenience issues but safety. Dalrymple School, Grover's Ave, Crest Ave, Sewell, Highland. It's better if you ask them than me."
What are the issues? I use the snow removal.
Egress, line of sight issues.
Okay.
Just about every side street in town.
I know, that's the problem. I could stay on snow removal around the clock, but then I would never be able to handle the salting shifts and plowing tomorrow. We've been running back and forth to Eastern Salt all day because they couldn't get us any deliveries, and we've also had guys in working on plowing and salt repairs.
Can we meet tomorrow for a meeting regarding the next storm? We can use my office again, let me know, thanks.
Yes, we were going to try to schedule a conference call sometime in the afternoon.
I have a 1:40 appointment with SpongeBob Mulder, I can be available after that.
Let's do it in the a.m. so we have some time left in the day if we need to get things done.
I can be available anytime, 10:00 a.m.?
9:30, I have mass at 10 o'clock.
Works for me.
You better start praying.
We'll need all the help we can get.
Works for me.
Hoop's turn, is it to bring the coffee?
I can do it, send me what you want. Hot chocolate for Terry.
Cream, no sugar, I'm sweet enough.
Just needs me too, just a small, thanks.
Okay, got it.
Just so you're in the loop, looks like tomorrow will be a snow day. Schools may be called off on Tuesday as well, depending on conditions. I'm not sure what the status of Town Hall will be on Tuesday, so we'll have to play it by ear.
From Boston, hello everyone. FYI, Boston public schools will be closed Monday and Tuesday. The mayor will be making it public this afternoon.
Ten-foot plow and dump available, we'll talk about it at 9:30 call.
Folks, any shot I could have school tomorrow with a two-hour delay? When can we have conference?
Would be great accomplishment if we could have school. Let's have a meeting at 1:30.
Four cash goes to storm going into early morning. This will have my crews at close to 30 hours. With that, I think the law says they will require an eight-hour break. This brings us, this brings us back by 8:00 a.m. if we're lucky enough to get done by midnight. With that said, I think two hours to open schools is a bit of a long shot.
I understand. However, I'm being told that this could end at nine, so I was inquiring.
Let's discuss, can we have a meeting?
John, if the snow ends at nine, I still have a townwide pushback and salting operation to a conflict before I can release people. Tomorrow, we could have lots, crosswalks, bus lots, school bus stops, not to mention every other municipal building. There's a lot to get done.
Understood. I'll be calling off school tomorrow. I'm going to do it now, see you at 4:30.
Sounds reasonable.
Even though the governor has declared a state of emergency tomorrow, Winthrop Town Hall will still be open for business at 10:00 a.m. I have been advised by my public safety team, the Town Hall and municipal parking areas will be operational.
Code Red info posted on web by Vinnie.
Thank you, Chief.
Any opportunity to clear sidewalks from Walden Corner up to Pauline by Cummings Loop? Also, the crosswalks need to be punched through. Too many kids walking in the street. I know all are exhausted and I appreciate the help, thanks.
For tomorrow, two loaders, two ten-wheelers with operators. Seven hundred per hour for entire group. We'll work around the clock. Ten-wheelers are holding on New York Farm, $175 per hour. Need 48-hour contract, have up to four. Tygate is closed in Revere. Absolute gridlock around the outside borders of Winthrop. It is closed till late Monday.
To Steve Cowell, how's the move? Do you have a back left? You should have moved to Florida.
Laugh out loud, believe me, I thought about it.
Why do we live here? Oh yeah, it's because the people are so friendly.
That must be it. I guess we are clutched to punishment. Move is done, getting ready for another 24 hours of hell. Ha, 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 we're in good shape, I'll keep you in the loop.
Okay, relax with your new bride and chill.
Tygate is closed in Revere. Absolute gridlock outside the borders of Winthrop. It is closed until late Monday.
I know, it's an unneeded inconvenience for everybody.
If not a problem, why does it close it?
I'm not sure, I guess it was a DCI decision.
Crews were able to go home by midnight last night due to the break in the snowfall. Back in this a.m., it's wild out. All Buffalo crews standing down at this moment. Water never impacted Short Beach. Gate caused more grief than the new snow to our residents. All Buffalo equipment has been requested on road. Large plow will start at 9:30. Loaders at 10. One of Steve's loaders is down and one salter is down. Using our contracts to dig stuck vehicles out of drifted roads.
Not sure whether to be concerned or grateful?
Definitely both.
Steve, any update? Overall update on how we're doing? Status of street cleaning, plowing, et cetera?
We kept the Buffalo crew busy last night, opening up some areas down Point Shirley. Currently, I have pushback crews going townwide, and we're utilizing the Buffalo crew to open up the Cottage Hill area. I'm also dealing with a water leak at 20 Sagamore. DPW crews will continue snow removal efforts tomorrow and make sure Town Hall can be opened as adequate parking. I will also be running for salt at Eastern Mineral.
Thank you, Steve.
No problem, it's been a joint effort with Chief Flanagan. What was that? You're in our eyes as a potential city district leader tomorrow.
Hi Steve, two questions. Will the RPT Cummings EB Newton lot be plowed? When do you need the cars off veterans? Thanks and great job.
Blue Street Lot was plowed last night, I'm sure wind blew a lot back. I'll send the pushback crew through today when they finish the townwide routes. Tomorrow, I will focus on Metcalf Square, Pauline, and Herman down to Belcher. We will put out a Code Red tomorrow for cars to be off Vex and River Road on Wednesday by 6:00 a.m. for snow removal. In municipal lots, including the rink, by 4:00 p.m. for snow removal in those locations. There's a good chance we'll be plowing once again tomorrow night.
Thanks. Anyway, we could get a plow over to the big, large bus lots now. Currently, we have buses that are going out for games and we can't get the buses out, thanks.
John, that area needs to be cleared with the loader. A plow won't be able to do it. Unfortunately, all machines are at Cottage Hill trying to clear up a mess there. I won't get to the buses until at least tomorrow. I was under the impression that all school priorities will relax due to February vacation.
We are all set, buses out. The only thing happening is make up sports games.
Emergency doors at rink have to be cleared.
A custodian of the high school in?
They were doing the sidewalks today, trying to get a van out in the back parking lot for the girls' makeup game. No plow available right now to help out, understand if not.
John, guys were on all day, just released them an hour ago.
No problem, I was just informed as well.
Cross Street has four-foot drifts in the street. One car buried in street, possibly two.
Geez, you would think the owner would be wondering.
Rink emergencies are cleared.
Thanks, Jim.
Yes, DPW moved with Bob Cash. We made good progress yesterday and last night in the immediate attention areas. We will continue today. We also fabricated the one-way signs for the streets identified yesterday, and we will deploy them today. Can we put out a Code Red early this morning for cars to be out of all municipal lots by 4:00 p.m. today for snow removal? Need to include Hammond Extension, and for all cars to be off Vex and Road, River Road, and Walden Street by 7:00 a.m. tomorrow morning for snow removal.
Head Massport dump in town to help wrap up last Calla request, street widening. Contract is standing down, most likely departing Winthrop tomorrow evening.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Please extend our appreciation. Will do, thanks and great job, Chief. Just wondering how you fared with the weather last night?
Residents shoveling catch basins, many large puddles around town, a few deep ones. We received one and a half inches of snow that residents have not taken seriously. It will be like cement tomorrow. School custodians were out this morning dealing with their warts.
Can we do a little snow removal work around front areas of Marketplace, Revere Street?
Yes.
Thanks.
My intention tomorrow is to have school, even if it needs to be delayed by one to two hours, thanks.
Steve, thanks for doing the center last night. No problem. This concludes a little reading. It is one of four chains of emails that we had going, and it really, you know, acknowledging the cheerleaders was so apropos tonight, but, you know, it's not surprising that teamwork is what Winthrop is all about. Because I've got the best team right here. These guys were tremendous. You know, when Paul Flanagan takes me around at some strange hour of the night and I see Steve Cowell in the loader, moving snow, hour in and hour out, along with his guys, it's really remarkable and heartening to see that kind of commitment that we get, that you get, as residents of this community, of the people that you have here. We talk through everything, share ideas, we bounce ideas off each other, but it is about teamwork. And I'm proud to be part of this team, and I want to thank you guys for the tremendous work you did this season. It was unbelievable.
Just because we're on WCAT, from my point of view, I'd love to send a kudos out to the general public. You know, years ago, before we had snow parking bins for snow events, you couldn't park on the roads all winter, all night, every night, whether it snowed or it didn't. We asked a lot from the people of the town, and it's mainly for fire apparatus. When we jump snowbanks, especially after they're frozen, it does damage to valves, mufflers, and everything else. Chief Delahanty's here, during that snow bin, the residents, we don't know where all the cars went, we knew where we, you know, most of them went, but the residents of the town, they were partners with us in this. They did a great job adhering to this lengthy, lengthy parking bin that we put on. From the fire chief's point of view, I'd like to thank all the residents of town for being so cooperative.
You know, a nice indicator of that is that we only had to tow seven vehicles this historic winter. Seven, that's it. That means compliance was happening, and people were listening, and people were paying attention, and doing their level best to deal with their personal situations so that they didn't encumber the public and the public safety. That is an absolutely accurate statement the chief just said. Thank you to the public for your cooperation in what we went through.
And just for the record there, I was too busy to be texting, so. Thank you.
So that concludes the entertainment portion of the show. Thank you for your indulgences. Next slide. You thought I was kidding when I said, how do we pay for it? This is actually a
... summary of what Tim Gordon has put together for, we couldn't be here tonight for a conflict, but he helped me put these figures together for tonight's presentation. And, you know, on a, on a community basis, you know, as compared to other communities, I think we fared fairly well. It's true that we are roughly four to five X what we usually budget due to this snowfall, but there were several issues that we confronted. First of all, even the last 1995 when we had a, you know, similar situation, that snow was extended across a number of months. This was truncated. This was a, literally a five-week event that really challenged us. So it, the dollars we had to spend this year were really much more for ensuring public safety access to every street and every dwelling in town. And so, we did incur expense, and to date, roughly, it's around $650,000 for this season. We have a usual snow and ice budget that we, on average, you know, we budget for about 44 inches of snow a year. That's the running average across, you know, the metro Boston area. This, now we have 110 inches of snow, so, but it's, the numbers don't correspond one to one. It's exponentiated. When you're dealing with snows on top of snows on top of snows, and nowhere to put them, and you have to go into an extensive snow removal and safety operation. So it's much more costly, the more snow you get. So currently, right now, we identified four storms that are potential for reimbursement. Paul Flanagan informs me that the first storm seems to have passed the first round of review, and it looks like we will see reimbursement for the 127, 370 figure. The other three storms will be consolidated into one request, and those requests have been put in, and our anticipation is that they will too be reimbursed at the 75%, meaning that we'll have reimbursements if all goes through for 371,416, thus ending our net balance at the present time of 189. That number will grow as we finish up the year and do final equipment inventory and repairs and other things that'll come in dribs and drabs over the next, you know, few weeks to a month or two. So, you know, we're probably, in any estimation, going to see probably $250,000 at least in terms of what we have to make up and supplement for this year's incredible and historic snowfall. So that is something that gets right off the bat in terms of budgeting. It becomes a budget challenge for us in terms of how we pay for it out of existing reserves. Generally, as you know, snow and ice expense can be put on what they call the recap sheet and added as a deficit for going, on a going-forward basis on your, on your next year's budget. But we're not inclined to do that, but for perhaps just a minimum, for a couple of reasons. One is, we need operational dollars to go to operational expense. Secondly, we don't have a lot of excess levy capacity, because you need that in order to count those numbers in if you're going to add deficits to your following fiscal year. And thirdly, we have reserves through our free cash efforts the past couple of years that I think are adequate to respond to this expense, thankfully. So, can we turn to the next slide? So, a quick review of FY15 is appropriate. A number of highlights that I think deserve mention. The schools successfully accomplished their swing space merge from four to three buildings. That was a tremendous effort by everyone, townside and schoolside included, particularly a big test for our Consolidated Facilities Department, which took on a list of 75 to 100 items of, that needed to be addressed over the course of six weeks. It was a tremendous effort by that department headed by Rich Safuni and Steve Cowell having input and the staff that we have that addressed all of the little things that annoy you, you know, when you're doing a move. Have you ever moved to your house? Try moving a school, and all of the things that are incumbent upon that, and all the little details that have to get chased down and addressed. And any one of them can become a major headache. And I gotta say that the school department, along with our facilities department, did a tremendous job of making that miracle happen. We were all holding our breath, but they did it. And the consequence of it has been a very productive school year. You know, I was very happy to hear the school budget presentation by not just the superintendent, but by the principals, talking in terms of innovation, in terms of creative thinking and new ideas that they wanted to pursue in their budgets, and despite the fact that, you know, we were in a transition period. At least if not, you know, kids are being educated in different facilities, but those facilities are not what they're used to, you know, and, you know, they have to live in those spaces and learn in those spaces. And it didn't come across to me like that was an impediment to their progress, which is a huge positive statement that I think the schools can really applaud themselves for. Another, you know, and by the way, the school building, the new high school building began to be constructed, and it's been wonderful to see that happen before our eyes. And we have a number of members of that committee, Mary Lou Osborne's here with us tonight. Great leadership on that effort by you and so many who participated in getting that building going, thank you. Thank you. And our free cash reserves hit a historic high this year, thankfully to a lot of work by our finance department, as well as the departments themselves, and being careful how they spend your tax dollars. So 2.3 million was able to be redeposited in our various stabilization accounts. I'll show you down below here that one of the items is, you know, being able to restore our overall reserve levels to 2.9 million dollars, which is a tremendously good statement that this town can make. And it was a good statement when we talked to Wall Street, because they were very impressed with that, and in fact, you know, gave us a positive recommendation on our bond issue, which resulted in a very favorable interest rate, 3.17. The markets were good, the timing was good. The consequence of all of that is that we were, and I'm going to skip down to the refunding of debt, we were able to refund our debt and issue our school building debt this year, saving the taxpayers, not the town, but the taxpayers, $8 million over the life of the borrowing of that school debt. And that's real tax relief. So, you know, that's really, want all these things work together to end up, you know, with that kind of a result. We also completed park restorations this year, Pond Street Park, Coughlin Park, and Crest Avenue Park. A great effort by our DPW and our Parks Committee and everyone involved in those important asset rebuilding efforts. Our residential property values increased by 12% in one year. And we had a full effort this year by our building, our reorganized building department and our public safety team to eradicate blight in our neighborhoods by instituting a number of things. One, the receivership program, which addressed properties on Beacon Street, Shirley Street, Winthrop Street, Beale Street, and Lincoln Terrace. Five properties we addressed. And the wonderful thing about those properties being restored is that it's not just about those properties themselves, but it's about the impact that that's having on the budding properties and the neighborhoods that they're in. I went on Beacon Street and saw that property restored, tremendous job. And then I noticed, and someone said to me, "Have you noticed the improvements that all the neighbors have made as a consequence of this property?" I looked around, it's true. This effort has residual impact to the benefit of these neighborhoods, and it's clear, and we're pursuing this program aggressively. The sanitation and habitation regulations that the council adopted are now fully in being implemented, and those inspections are ongoing, and people are appreciating, you know, the efforts that we're making to make sure that rental apartments in Winter are deserving of, you know, to be lived in and are up to code. And also, we're pursuing an aggressive tax title process that will, has already this year resulted in almost half a million dollars of uncollected tax revenues. So a three-prong approach that I think is, if we stay the course, will really put us in good shape relative to the residential tax base. Moving on to eight major projects that we're looking at out the front window, we've got a lot to do. Not the least of which is to clean up after this winter, and thankfully, we're seeing some money come from the Commonwealth. The governor approved some pothole money for us, 41,000, which will go some way towards this effort. The council recently supplemented that with 20,000. You know, once Steve takes a real measure of what is in front of us, we'll get a better sense of what that expense will involve. But certainly, we know full well that a lot of streets, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of curbs, some fencing, some, you know, fencing around the parks, all that needs to be restored, and it's a big task in front of us. Our hope is that we can continue our efforts to have the Veterans Road Drainage and Lewis Lake dredging project happen and begin this year. I've been in conversations with DCR Commissioner Murray about identifying this as a DCR project, and our effort is to get that on going this spring. We have an obligation to address Miller Field and the plan for that. And I know Sean Driscoll and Superintendent Masero are, and a few others in this room are going to be participating in a committee, a task force focused on how we can move redevelopment of that field forward. I know the speaker's got a very sincere interest in that field as well, and I'm sure he will be a valuable resource. The high school, middle school reuse plan, we're putting together a reuse team at the request of the council to look at possible options for that school once it becomes vacant, and that'll be underway this year. The Center Business District getting some attention at the planning board level and some interesting projects maybe forthcoming. It's going to be a focus of ours, no doubt, this year to ensure that we can make the center a thriving place to do business and for people to visit. So that'll be in front and center this year. Implement the town ferry service. We have an obligation now, because we have a building and we have a boat that's due to come and arrive in August, to put an operational plan together for the ferry and to make it successful. My efforts will include having that as a subset of the harbor department and run out of that office with credentialed captains and crew. And so we're developing an operations plan. I visited with the harbor management committee last night, getting their input on that as well, and it's something that, you know, a lot of advice and help will be needed to make sure that's successful. We're revamping our town website this year and looking at other technology advancements in how we do business as an administration, and we're increasing public health services and awareness in town. There are two very, very strong prospects, looking at Winthrop, to bring greater general medical practice to Winthrop. And so those are some big challenges that we can, along with a variety of other things that we do every day, but I think as a focus, that's a good worksheet to start from, and it certainly gives us a lot, a lot to do. And if we accomplish most, if not all, of these things, I think you'll see the town advance very strongly in next year. The budget. All that being said, there are always three guiding principles and one rule that you have to follow when you budget at the municipal level. One, stabilize where necessary. That means addressing the things where you're weak and dealing, addressing them. Build for sustainability, make sure that what you're funding is going to be sustainable from year one to year two to year three and going forward, and then improve on what you're doing by adding and augmenting where it's necessary in terms of resources. And the rule is, live within your limits. Live within the limits of Proposition 2.5 and what this town can afford to live with. And so while the council president says it's simple, if we live by that rule, it would be simple. Never seems that way, though. It's not easy, right? So what are our challenges? As we discussed, the snow and ice deficit. We'll need to pay for that. One kicker that's always takes the first dollar out of every new revenue that you might get is what are called your fixed costs, and one of them is health insurance. This year, unfortunately, while several years we saw, you know, modest rate increases from GIC, this year we're seeing a blended increase of 6.9%, and that will cost the town in new expense roughly $400,000. So that comes right off the top. Pension costs is another fixed expense that we need to continue to pay for off the top. The budgets that were submitted to me were basically requests in excess of $1.2 million over anticipated revenue. So we have to roll up our sleeves and get to work and figure out how we can square that with realistic revenue projections. Capital purchases, while we would like to hold to some of the efforts that we did in the past in terms of our equipment purchases in our general fund, we will have to forego that this year, just to compensate for some of these other fixed cost expenses. And so my request, my recommendation to the council will be that we fund capital purchases, a reasonable program of capital purchases, as we did several items this year, through our capital stabilization fund and our funding policy once free cash is certified in September. And we need to continue to fund our OPEB trust at a level that shows some growth. And so you add up those as a back-of-the-envelope exercise, and you have $1.9 million in new You take with that a few things that will impact as well, and one is that, you know, the sidewalk commitments that we have been making each and every year has been a good policy that the council and the Finance Commission has seen fit to continue. I'm suggesting this year that we set that aside, because the council is, in fact, investing in sidewalks substantially with a bond issue for 650,000 for sidewalk improvements at Cottage Hill area and Pico Ave area. So we can set that aside, knowing that we're still keeping with the tenants of that policy, but in a different mechanism. Water consumption for this year is a concern. We did get our blended rate from the MWRA on water use for the town, and it's up by 12%. They take a three-year rolling average of water consumption, and it spiked a bit these past few, two years in a row, and so we'll need to adjust for that increase in assessment that we'll see from the MWRA. That said, our sewer rate has, our sewer use, or assessment, rather, has not spiked correspondingly, so there'll be less of an impact on sewer. But it is concerning that the use of water in this town has gone up substantially. I think it was, Steve, do you know the amount of gallons off the top of your head that we've...
Right now, in the month of March, we're up 150,000 gallons per day compared to 2013.
It could be that, you know, with good growth comes more use of water. You know, it could be that, you know, we're just capturing, you know, we're using more water. It's as simple as that. We still have to explore how our radio read process is hopefully going to, you know, positively impact that. We want to make sure that we're not, we don't have any major leaks. You've done a leak detection exercise, Steve?
We've got to schedule this year, actually, this May. Hopefully April, but most likely May. By protocol, we're required to do leak detection every two years.
So Steve's on it. We're going to take a measure of why, to the best of our ability, understand this increase and where it's coming from.
The veterans' expense of Chapter 115 benefits has increased substantially over the past year and a half, and it's something that the council will need to take note of. We've been supplementing that budget substantially these past few years. And the first high school debt will hit in '16, the first payment. So that said, you've got a number of issues that we need to work around and fold in and fit in and sort of blend into an operating budget. Now, how do we do that? Our general revenue picture is fairly straightforward. Proposition 2.5 levy allows us to increase by 2.5% our real estate tax revenue in the community. That roughly this year will equal 638,957. We estimate fairly consistently, again, we have to be somewhat conservative, because while last year we saw some impressive growth, that growth is not necessarily something that we can say is going to happen each and every year, so we have to adjust down from that number. And right now, our figure, an estimated new growth for budgeting purposes, is 120,000. We did see an increase in state aid, subject to the House One final amendment, budget amendment, from the governor of 163,408. A piece of that is Chapter 70 money, 38,920, general government increase of 135,047, less offsets of new additional assessment charges of 36,217. Wash that through when you end up with a net of 163,408. We do think that it's reasonable this year to increase our local receipts figure. That's always a touchy subject, because you never know, really, from one year to the next, you know, entirely, you know, what the full local receipt figure is going to be. And this town had some experience in overestimating its local receipt figure a few years ago, and it didn't come in. And so that's on the minds of the folks in Town Hall to say, let's make sure that we're going to be conservative with that local receipt estimate, and also make sure that we take a factor of that, because the DOR doesn't allow you to book a full 100% value of that. They'll only allow you to take 90% of it. So that said, we think that a good local receipt estimate adjustment should be in the neighborhood of 200,000. That coupled with Tim Gordon's efforts to appropriate the indirect costs properly to the general fund from the enterprise funds, as he did through his cost study, which is an 83,619 charge against the general fund, means that we end up with roughly 1,000, 1,38,746 in new revenue. Well, you can already tell that the bottom line is a deficit. That's the challenge that I have, together with my departments, to cut from our budgets to meet the available funds to fund the FY16 budget. We're in the process of doing that. I've met with nearly everyone to date, and it's not been, you know, quite the oral surgery, some thought, but, you know, any visit to the dentist is somewhat painful, and they've endured a little bit of my pain over the past few weeks with grace and understanding. And, you know, obviously, you know, the schools are a partner in that effort to live within our means, and so, you know, we'll have discussions with the superintendent as well regarding what we think is a reasonable and fair figure to recommend to the council. So the challenge is substantial, but we can meet the challenge, and we will meet the challenge. And I have an obligation to submit to the council a balanced budget, and I will do so. But it comes with some understanding of how, you know, we need to work each year a little differently. The art versus the science part of how we develop a budget, which is understanding some of the moving parts, keeping with some disciplines, because they're smart, but understanding that, you know, our success has led us to some opportunity, and perhaps we need to avail ourselves of some of that opportunity to offset some of the expense and to make sure that we can fund this government. Because you have a good government. It's a lean, strong, and effective local government. There's no fat in this budget. There's no fat in any of these departments. We're still considerably short in terms of equipment and manpower in DPW. We're just only trying to get to the levels of full complement in both police and fire. We're not even there yet. And, you know, the schools have their issues that many of you are aware of, that they are advocating strongly for new and advanced ideas in the schools. So, you know, all in all, I think you can rest assured that your money is being spent wisely and with prudence, but we still have a pretty big challenge in front of us, and this month, we'll take a lot of work on our parts, together with meetings with the Finance Commission and subcommittee meetings, to come up with a rational approach to recommending a balanced budget. And with that, I'll close and ask if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Nice presentation. And now the rolling up the sleeves...
And now the rolling up the sleeves and the scrubbing that Jim talked about is going to come under the responsibility of our Finance Commission. Our Finance Commission is made up of seven citizens who make up the finance, Citizen Finance Commission, and then our Town Council Finance Subcommittee. I'm going to call on Bob Winn, the chairman of the Finance Commission, to just get up and give a brief discussion of how he's going to work on that red $833,000 with his committee, very capable committee.
Good evening. The Finance Commission was created when the town charter was put together, when we converted from the old form of government to the Town Council form of government. And the single purpose of the Finance Commission is to make a recommendation to the Town Council regarding the town manager's annual budget. The Finance Commission can recommend that the budget is fine the way it's presented. We can make amendments. But at the end of the day, the council will make a decision based upon its review and discussions, and they can make amendments, or they can accept the town manager's budget as proposed. As Peter said, the commission consists of 10 members, three from the Town Council, and seven from the Citizens Advisory Finance Commission, Committee, excuse me. The members of the Finance Commission have a lot of experience in different things. We have business owners. I think we have three people that own their own businesses. We have members who've worked in finance, banking, general government, health care, and general business. We also have three members who have prior experience in different aspects of government. We have two members who were school committee, on school committees, one in Winthrop, one in another community, and we have a former selectman. The council members are councilors Dalvento, Leteri, and Boyajin. The current citizen advisory members are Barbara Flavin, Karen Chavis, Jan Twombly, Bob Driscoll, Gus Martucci, Miriam Regan-Fiori, and myself. The process is kind of outlined, again, in the town charter. The town manager has to submit a budget to the Town Council by May 1st. The Town Council then has 45 days to review and pass the budget. During that time, the Finance Commission works with the other, with the town manager, the CFO, and other town management departments, and we put together our recommendation sometime in early to mid-May, generally after the Town Council's public hearing on the budget, because it's important for us to hear and get input from the community as well. But the process has already started. It usually starts in February. We meet March, throughout March, April, and May. Sometimes it'll even trickle into very early June, if necessary. We always meet with the town manager and the CFO. That obviously makes sense. But we meet with department heads as well, and we always meet with the fire chief, the police chief, the DPW director, who also has responsibilities for the water and sewer. And we, of course, meet with the superintendent of the schools and other members of his team who developed the school budget. We will meet with other town department heads if they request, and in some cases, if they ask to meet with us, because they have a budget that may not have had any issues in the past, but for some reason this year, something's unique or different, and they'd like to talk to us and get our, have us hear what their concerns are. The budget has a lot of moving parts, not the least of which is the local aid provided within the state budget. As Jim mentioned, we're looking at a figure right now, I think, of $163,000. That's in the governor's budget. Hopefully, as that matures and the House and the Senate start looking at the budget process, the local revenue will increase, which is always something we look forward to. However, keeping that in mind, the budget has to be built around what we know, and then adjusted as we go forward, as things change. So it can get kind of hectic toward the end. What's always required is good communication and goodwill between the Finance Commission and the members of town government. We've always had that. We look forward to it again this year, and hopefully, the process of making up that deficit won't be too painful. Okay, thank you.
And believe me, it's not easy working with this group. No, I'm kidding. But I have to say that last year, at the time that the budget was presented, due to the work of the Finance Commission, along with all the department heads and the town manager, the budget came to the council, and there was one minor amendment to the budget before the vote. So it meant that nobody was a pushover, but everybody agreed that that was the best presentation of the budget, given the resources that we had and the priorities that were established. And I credit the Finance Commission, the citizens, and the councilors who put that all together. So again, thank you, guys, and appreciate your efforts. At this point, we'll open up to, I'll ask the council to come back up to the front, and then we'll open up to the audience to any specific questions related to the budget through the town manager or through the department heads. If you do have a question, please come up to the mic and identify yourself. Does anybody have a question regarding what we talked about tonight? Or any other fiscal concerns? Jim, you must have done one heck of a job, and Bob, you must have done one heck of a job, too. The, yeah. I thought it was interesting, the Little Dog and Pony Show, can I call it that in the beginning, as well as your explanation of where we are and what the Finance Commission now has to do to make this all work. If there are no further questions, no questions from the public, I'd just like to take a minute to reiterate what Jim, and Paul, and Terry, and Steve had all said, that the community that we have working together here, I'm very proud to be part of it. I'm proud to be on the team. I'm proud to see that Mr. McKenna's leadership and the leadership of all of our department heads have been just tremendous, that the working together is just, it's working. This is Winthrop, and Winthrop is unique. We're seeing not only our department heads and our town manager, but our council, our council supporting the workforce, and our council working together. Behind the scenes, there's those guys that drive the plows 36 hours at a time, the guys that drive the fire engines, the guys that drive the police cars, the ladies and gentlemen who work in the senior center, and all of the other employees who are behind the scenes that are making this happen. Our committees, our volunteer committees from the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals, and all of those committees, the Parks Committee, have just been tremendous, and we're seeing it. We're seeing the results of it. People have said to me time and time again that we've never seen Winthrop look like it work, look like it looks now, and work like it works now. As Paul said, we're here, but it's you, you, the citizens, that are making all this happen. So again, thank you for your support, and thank you to all our committees, all of our employees, for making Winthrop the Winthrop that it is. Thank you. Given that, that concludes the Spring Forum. Thank you all for being here. Special meeting of the Winthrop Town Council, March 24th, 2015, is now called to order. Council Clerk, what you call it for?
Council Callow, present. Council Stanford. Council Boncorrie. Council Royal. Council Leteri.
Yeah.
Council Boyajin.
Here.
Council Dalvento.
Yep.
Vice President Mayo.
Yes.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
Moving on to the item of discussion of the DPW materials and supplies account for extraordinary potholes repaired. At our last regular council meeting, we incorporated $20,000 to do some temporary pothole repairs for the DPW to get started. A brief discussion started on looking toward doing more permanent repairs, a larger scale, and I'd like to just open that up for discussion this evening and see what the feelings of the council are. I think that, maybe we'll call on Mr. McKenna first to just give a little fill-in on what we were talking about, as opposed to just the $20,000 that we already appropriated, to instead of doing just temporary repairs, get into more, I don't know if the word semi-permanent is correct, or more extensive repairs than just patchwork type.
I think we appreciate, you know, the point of view of the council as far as wanting to do it right. I think we need to do an assessment, though, of the critical areas. I know Steve has got a list, you know, already developing of where, you know, clearly he can start addressing some things as quickly as, you know, the weather and the circumstances will allow. I know we don't want to just fill a hole and hope for the best. We want to get it done correctly. It's certainly, you know, going to be, every situation's unique, and I'd have to defer to Steve there to talk about his methods of looking at those things. Steve?
Thank you. And Steve, maybe give us the correct terminology. I know you told me this, like a cotton do something.
Yeah. I've actually put together a bid package for grind and overlay, really, also known as milling and resurfacing, but it's by the square yard, and it's, you know, a company will come in, and they'll grind and overlay. There'll be areas where the grinding and overlay won't work. We may have to get into a reclaim, pulverize the asphalt, much like the road projects that we're doing with our water main projects, but that's going to be all the bid tab. So we'll have a contract that has specific bid tabs, dependent on the need at the specific location. We'll have a contract in place, and we'll be able to move forward. Grinding and overlay typically costs around $80,000. Reclamation, up until about 24 and 25 ounces per yard. So the money will get used up pretty quickly, but we'll be able to do, like you say, more permanent repair, other than just filling a hole. We'll also have a bid tab in there for a, I just lost my train of thought, but we'd say, you've seen us doing last year, the company can actually heat up.
Infrared.
Infrared. And we can do some infrared patching, which is, what happens is if we go and we just cut out a patch and, you know, we square it off and put it in, you still have the seam. The water still can penetrate that, and that's when it doesn't hold up. That's when they continue to pop off. So this bid will allow us to have different methods at our fingertips, and we'll be able to do permanent repairs.
When you talk about the grind and overlay, is it something like you did on Winthrop Street last year, like between George Street and St. George Church?
I didn't know whether you tried an overlay or whatever.
Two or three years ago, you did some major thing.
Washington Avenue.
Yeah.
Huron Street. Last year, we did Huron Street.
Okay. Delby's.
Delby's Corner. That was all grind and overlay.
Okay. All right, so if you could come up with a sort of a plan for us, and we could put together some funding and determine what needs to be done. Questions from the council or comments?
How mu, sorry, yeah.
Go ahead.
You would, I know I remember that we did discuss that the state was going to be providing additional funding for pothole repair, I believe, was it? $41,000 or so? So how was that fact, I guess, so you, Steve, you'd want to do an assessment first to look at how much the cost, and then come back?
Right now, just quickly going around town, and things are still melting, and things are continuing to pop off, I can see an immediate need of about $7,500 square yard of repair. That's about $112,000 if it's just grind and overlay at that $18 square yard, as soon as that number gets. Obviously, that price goes up if you get into, you know, the reclamation or the, you know, other methods that are a little bit more expensive. But just strictly grind and overlay, $7,500 square yard, should give in around $112,000.
So I guess my question would be to you, Steve, would be, is it better that we wait for you to assess the whole town, or should we start with what your initial evaluation to get you going? I don't know the answer to that.
We would do the procurement process first, to get an actual bid, and to understand just what we think the conditions are for the pricing of it, and then we come back to you with a full recommendation.
Yes, Steve, I do like the idea, Jim, that getting the contract out, or at least getting it, you know, in some ballpark on quantity, we do have some money, you know, with that 41, and that would be the long-term stuff. This isn't going to, you know, I think people don't understand, that's like the May, June, July, August type work. In the short term, you know, I've seen the hot box driving around, you know, at all times and places.
We've got to be up there with the hot box. We're going to continue to fill the deep potholes, you know, to eliminate the, or to reduce the, you know, the claims. But we're going to Central Register, April 1st. We're hoping for a bid opening on April 16th, that, you know, what I just spoke of.
What was that, you're going to do April 1st? What was that, Steve?
April 1st goes to Central Register, and then we're hoping for a bid opening of April 16th.
Great. So what our plan is, that we're not going to fill the potholes now and then fill them again in September?
Well, I am, I am going to fill the potholes.
Oh, I know we have to do it now.
Yes, but it's not, obviously not the grind and overlay, not the more permanent repairs that you speak of.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? If not, if we could just have you make us a presentation when it's appropriate.
Sure.
And Jimmy.
Mr. Council Leteri, on the, you know, working with the.
As we discussed our last meeting, the construction team at the new high school is going to be pouring concrete slabs in the, well, beginning of the 1st of April. It's a process that will take a couple of weeks, and it's going to take extended hours. So we thought it would be prudent, obviously, they'd have to, we had thought that they might be able to go through the chief, but looking through the ordinances, the chief was right on top of his game, as usual, and realized that this is something that the council needs to do. So I would like to look at the Town Ordinance, Chapter 8, dot, point 20, point 060. Section H gives the council the ability to give permission to prohibit these construction workers to work for an extended period, and I would like to have that. You know, they're telling us that it could be, you know, seven to 10 days. I think it'd probably be prudent to do it for the month of April, and then we could stop it, you know, in the third week if necessary, but this way we wouldn't have to come back for a special meeting. So I would like to invoke that rule, again, Chapter 8, dot 20, dot 060, Section H, which permits the council to give such permission to work extended hours on a construction site.
Motion by Council Leteri to invoke the rule that he has quoted. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Boyajin. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foesed, unanimous. Now, we need a specific motion to allow the work to continue. We need a separate motion, correct? Oh, just invoke it.
Okay.
If there is no further business, motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, before we do, I just want to take this opportunity to announce that this Saturday, the 28th, Parks and Rec will be running their annual character breakfast. Same place, but different location. Still at the high school cafeteria, but the high school cafeteria has moved to the new high school cafeteria. So it will be this Saturday, March 28th, from 8:30 to 11:30. Enjoy breakfast with the Easter Bunny and many of your other favorite characters, and of course, the annual Easter egg hunt. Tickets are available at Parks and Rec and could also be purchased online. Purchasing tickets in advance is $8, and tickets at the door would be $10. It's always a fantastic event. Sean and his crew puts on, does a great job with this. It's a fantastic annual event for Winthrop. I encourage y'all to attend, and it's Saturday, March 28th, 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. at the Middle High School cafeteria.
Thank you. Any further? Yes, Jim?
I think we ought to acknowledge that Gales has won the state's title in hockey.
Oh, the U-10. The U-10, yes, the U-10. Jim?
Do you acknowledge the U-10, Bush's team?
Yes, the state, for the second year in a row, Puch Martucci, who coaches the Winthrop Youth Hockey Girls U-10 Team, won the state championship.
the Winthrop Youth Hockey Girls U-10 Team, won the state championship. It's a fantastic job. These girls are nine and 10 years old, um, and they've probably been playing hockey for two, three years now, and, um, it's just a fantastic, um, accomplishment for him, and to do this two years in a row. Uh, Winthrop Youth Hockey has gone, probably they had won one state championship in five years, in, in the preceding five years, and now this team has won two in a row, which is quite an accomplishment. Butch does a fantastic job. He is one of the best motivators I've, I've ever seen coaching. Uh, the girls just take to him and would run through a brick wall for him. So, um, you know, he's done a great job, given his coaching staff, and I want to congratulate the girls for winning the U-10 Massachusetts State Championship, uh, for girls hockey.
And the U-10, uh, girls have carried on to the high school, and they've done a credible job, uh, as well. And with the U-10 now progressing, all we can see is that high school team is just gonna get better and better.
Well, it's amazing, because last year they did win the U-10 State Championship, and only, I believe only two or three of the girls from that team remained as U-10s, and all the rest moved out. So, he basically did it again with a whole new group of girls. So, great job. Kudos to Butch.
Great, great job, Butch, and, and his motivation with the kids is phenomenal. The subtle things that happened among the girls are just tremendous.
And, you know, on a smaller note, uh, so there are other teams, um, in Winthrop, and I know the basketball team, the middle school, they won the championship. The middle school, Steve?
Uh, oh, seventh.
The basketball?
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade, and the Mites, they won their championship, too.
The girls' high school basketball.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's tremendously, the, the athletic and the extracurricular stuff, and the drama and, and the, uh, the mock trial, I mean, there's just all this...
Yeah, yeah.
Tremendous stuff going on. I will take Mr. Lettieri's motion, Council Lettieri's vote, Council Dalvento's motion, I'm looking at Lettieri. Council Dalvento's motion.
To adjourn?
Second and by.
Say make it, Jim.
Let, why don't you second, second, have the right name for it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.